Good evening. It is now 6:04 and I will call the June 9th meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. We are at the senior center and we are also available on the Zoom platform. So would you please rise and join me in saluting the flag? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. First order of business is approval of the minutes from the June 2nd meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion made.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have some minutes from our railroad meeting of the Board of Directors for the railroad. There should be a chair right over there. You can grab, have a seat. Do we have the minutes here?
Yeah, the minutes from the bar sucking meeting was front and back of the first page.
And the second one?
Second one is there.
Railroad meeting, yep.
I talked to Sofia. He's gonna try to draw that out this week for us. The sketch and a written description. He's been off the wall busy, so we'll get something hopefully by the end of this week.
Yep. Alright, so as the Board of Directors are the Board of Selectmen, I will entertain a motion to approve the North Brookfield Railroad meeting minutes of June 12.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Second. Yeah, we haven't gotten to the 12 yet, have we?
No.
June 2nd.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second. All in favor? Okay, the next item is approval of warrants. I want to entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number 25 for $341,665.91. School warrant number 1060 for $98,738.17. General warrant number 1061 for $47,321.97. And debt warrant number 21,705.98.
Motion to approve.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Tara said she can't hear me.
Yeah, she can't hear me. I'm showing I'm not muted here, though. Can you still not hear me?
Ask Fitzgerald if he can hear you.
Let me see. I can't unmute anybody either. Can you hear me? Fitz? Can you hear me? I wonder if it's because I have this. Can you hear me now?
No, I already sent them a message.
Can you hear me now?
I got you.
Can you hear me?
Perfect. Great.
Oh.
There we go.
Alright. I had it plugged in so that you could hear the TV and it must kick my speaker out. Let me, technology, gotta figure that out. Okay, so we've done approval of the minutes and approval of the payroll warrants. So we are at transfer requests, financial transfer requests.
What do we got?
Oh, thank you.
And you have lists in there, too. Some of them, some from this list were approved last week.
Okay. Yeah, and some went to Finance Committee first?
Yes.
So the first one is a request to transfer $29,246.66 from the Board of Selectmen various accounts.
Yeah, there's a spreadsheet with everything listed.
Alright, to various accounts under the Board of Selectmen because we fell short, so we need to bring these back up into the positive.
Right on that top sheet, it should have all the...
Oh, you got this one?
Yeah, that should have.
So that's fire, board of health.
Bar sucking right there.
Oh, okay. So we got $29,000 coming out of sick leave buyback, assistant salary, beaver removal, townhouse expenses, rail trail expenses, and going into the various accounts that are short. Purchase of service, town council, technology, electricity, advertising, office supplies, oil, heat, and general insurance. So those bring, that brings all those current. It's been signed by the town accountant, so she's the one evidently that identified these. Finance Committee's already approved. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the transfer.
Motion to approve made.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next one is $1,179.62 from highway street painting to snow and ice removal. Shortfall in that account. And I think that account shorted only in that last storm, so we did pretty well.
Sounds like they'd be better with the salt than they did with the sand. It seems to take care of the roads a lot better.
Yeah, it does. A lot better. So although it's a little more expensive, it's actually saving us money.
Yep.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion made.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is $7,848.77 from snow and ice vehicle repairs, snow and ice diesel gas account to the snow and ice sand account. Oh no, snow and ice sand coming from, right? Transferring to snow and ice salary. So it's $7,848. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion made.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is highway purchase of service to highway snow and ice salary account. So I'll entertain a motion to approve, $216.11.
Motion made to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Then $5,800 from the Board of Selectmen Admin Assistant Salary Account to the Accountant's Salary Account. And that's to cover the shortage after we terminated the previous accountant and hired the interim to fix that mess. So I would entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I think that handles all of them, right?
Yep.
Okay, next.
We have five minutes, I think?
I get 6:14.
Oh, okay.
So before I get into anything else, I will wait for that. So we have a 6:15 pole petition scheduled with National Grid. I see somebody from National Grid is on with us.
Yes, good evening everybody.
How you doing?
Good.
Good. Alright, so...
That's what we said. You've got this in your folder.
So this is National Grid seeking permission to erect poles, wires, and fixtures at Elm Street?
That's correct.
It's been posted, right? Advertised in the paper?
Yep.
Elm Street, National Grid, two JO poles on Elm Street installing pole 35 and 35-50 with anchor and guy wire. This is the one, John, that you dealt with, right?
I don't think so.
Is this going into the...
I think this is further up.
Further up?
I think.
So this doesn't impact the rail trail at all?
No.
No. No, that one hasn't come, they were gonna re-engineer that one.
Okay.
This is further up for the orchard coming down.
Okay. Alright, so National Grid, do you have anything to add to the pole petition?
Well, pole 35 is the relocation. We tried to keep our equipment on the side of the road. But besides that, I think it should be pretty straightforward. We are just trying to see the new solar farm up on our old east porch of road.
Okay. Are you here for that pole petition or something else?
Pole hearing. The pole!
The pole hearing. Yep.
Six thirty, the pole hearing?
Yep. So they're on now with National Grid. What do you have to say? Are you in a butter?
Just showing an interest.
Okay. And you're in a butter to the project? Do you live near it?
Is that?
Do you live nearby?
No. Carl Gustafson, Leno.
Oh, Carl, yeah. I didn't recognize you. Do you object to any of the pole? Do you object?
Is that?
Are you in a, do you object to the pole or are you in favor of it? I don't hear an objection, so...
Do we wanna get him closer so he can hear you?
Yeah.
Do you wanna move up, Carl, so we can, so you can hear us?
I can't understand you.
So we move him up a little closer?
Do you wanna come closer?
Carl, let me get your chair so you can hear us. Put a chair over here so you can hear us for now. Come on, sit up here. Now we can hear you.
Want to have me a hearing?
That's where we're going now, yeah.
If anyone want to hear?
Yep.
Don't forget it. I'll call it home.
Well, the other ones are on the computer. They're on the, National Grid is on the TV.
Doesn't make much of a hearing.
Did you have an objection to it at all?
And did it go the way you wanted to object? You gotta do it anyway.
Well, we can...
I just wanna know what's going on, that's all.
This is for the pole?
I'm interested.
This is for the poles when they come down the hill off the orchard? The pole's right across the street?
Yeah, I know.
On the orchard path?
Yeah, they're marked.
Yep. Yep, are you good with it or...
I live up on Leno Avenue.
Oh, you know.
I'm interested.
Yep. Yep.
That's our property. They're coming down through.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you good with it?
Is that?
Are you good with everything? Are you, do you approve of it?
If you're gonna have it, you're gonna have a way to get to the power line, yeah.
Right, yeah. Yep. And they're gonna put, I think, six more poles going up?
Yeah.
I think. So they're talking about the two on the road. They have to, they have to put taller ones. That's what the hearing is about. So are you okay?
I'm just interested, that's all.
Okay, yeah.
I go up on the, see the superintendent up on the hill periodically. When he was at the other project right next door, I used to stop and visit with him.
Yep.
Just interested, what's going on, that's all.
Right, yep. Yep. Well, this is the hearing and we have to do it with National Grid over the computer.
No, I mean, it's, it's all cut and dry at all. I mean, you can't stop them, so...
Well, you could argue with them. I don't know if you're gonna stop them.
They can't do any good.
It's for you guys' projects over there that this is being done, so...
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright. So let the record reflect that Carl Gustafson, one of the abutters, was in. No opposition. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the pole petition.
Yeah, they're relocating one pole over there, right? Is that what?
Yeah, it's installation of one. They're installing two poles.
Yes, I'm sorry. We are installing one new pole and relocated pole 35.
Okay.
So 35-50 is the new one?
Correct.
Yep.
Okay.
That's when they cross the street and then they...
Yep.
Pole 35 was on the east, is it east side or north side?
Looks like it's east, west side. Because north is straight up, right?
So it'll be the northeast side and they're putting it on the...
And so the northeast side, yeah.
Yeah, and you're putting on, on the southwest side. Just across the street and up a little bit.
Correct.
Yep. And that gets a guy wire also?
Uh, yep. Pole 35 and pole 35-PC both, like, it anchors and guy wire.
And the orchard is fine with that?
I believe so, sir, yep.
Yeah.
Yep, they're not here and they were...
Well, it's for them, so...
They were notified, so...
They're not gonna argue because it's awful.
Alright. Alright, so with no opposition, I'll entertain a motion to approve the pole petition.
Motion made to approve.
I'll second. All in favor? Alright, and now I will close the pole petition and move on to old business. Do we have any old business?
No.
Just me.
No old business to discuss, so moving on to new business. The lease for the town offices.
It's not in there because as I was reading through, they had in the last section 11.11, it says, talking about serving notice, and they have our address listed as 185 Main Street, the old townhouse. So I'm gonna, I asked her to change it and I haven't heard back. So we can do it next week, but legally, I think that it should be 215 North Main Street if they're gonna serve.
Asking, suppose, for notice to, to the town?
Yeah.
Under the lease?
Yeah, notice to the tenant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gotta be 215.
Yeah.
Alright. So we'll step that back a week. The next one. Standard contract, oh, this is to amend and extend the MVP grant deadline. So we've been, the grant deadline has been extended a year. So we just have to sign the new contract extending it to the new date.
What's the MVP? What is it?
The Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Planning Grant.
That was with Peter Peliquin?
Yes, and we did all of it via Zoom and at the last minute, they said, okay, sure, you can have an extension. So we do have it mostly done and we don't plan on waiting, but we would like to have the public listening session in person, so...
Yep, yep, okay. Too many abbreviations.
What is that one?
Looks like I gotta sign two of these. Alright, that's all set. So next is accepting donations for the park. We have donations, we have a list?
We have two more donations that you haven't accepted yet. One from Peter Dupell and one from Edie Hubeck. 500 and 400.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the donations for the park from Pete Dupell and Edie Hubeck.
Motion made to accept.
I will second. All in favor? And thank you both for the generous donation.
I think most of everyone that donated, if you want.
Yeah, I think we need to, yeah, let me, I'll bring people up to speed on people who so far. So far, we've received donations for that park up in the center from Bill King, Carol Ryback, Dennis Kelly, John Tripp, James Grace, Joey Hallway, Algoos Convenience, the North Brookfield Police Association, North Brookfield Subway, Robert Banthen, Sri Shiv, I think is the other liquor store in town, right?
Yes.
Yes, yep.
Edie Hubeck, so this is Edie's second donation. Much appreciated. Catherine St. Siere, Pete Dupell. So thank you very much. I don't know if people have noticed, but we, we spent a few hours ripping out the...
The old mulch, stones, roots.
That netting stuff that was buried 12 inches down and putting black mulch on. So it looks good. We got a plan to put the pathways in pretty soon. There'll be some lighting. John's got some plans for some lighting, so it'll be looking good in no time.
Yeah, and also Algoos Convenience is donating the bark mulch that we just put down.
Oh, that's right. Forgot to mention that, yeah. Put Algoos on there for an in-kind donation of fun. Was it three, two yards of bark mulch?
Two yards.
Two yards of bark mulch.
Would you say Algoos?
Algoos, yeah, the convenience store.
I don't know his first name, but it goes by L.
So the next thing we have is the police department. The police department contract calls for fitness incentive pay. And to get that pay, they have to take a fitness exam that's usually given by the state police in its, this time of year. Unfortunately, the fitness test cannot be given because of the coronavirus shutdown. we'd like to pay the stipend without them having to take the test this year. And we drafted a memorandum of understanding with the police department that this is a one-time thing and it's not gonna set precedent and they have to go through the testing process next year in order to get the fitness stipend. And I don't think there's any police officer in town at this point that would not pass it anyway, so I'm really not concerned about it.
Maybe we should have them run up and down the rail trail a couple times.
Yeah, we give our own tests. John with a stopwatch.
I don't like that idea.
If you can beat John, you're in.
I'll take that. We'll give it a shot.
So I guess I'll entertain a motion to execute the memorandum of understanding so they can pay out that stipend before the end of July.
Motion made.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have anything else?
Um, no, just a couple of announcements.
Okay, so public comment period. The board is available for anybody from the public that wishes to address the board on any issue. I see we got Tara watching from the clerk's office. We got Fitzgerald Pucci, new, new...
That's right.
New face in town. Well, not new in town, but new to the Board of Selectmen's meetings. And you're just jumping.
Glad to be here, sir.
Alright. I like your enthusiasm, newfound enthusiasm for public service. Cool.
A great time to get into things, my friends.
Good. Anything you need to address us on at this point? Did you have anything for us?
Yes. I have a proposal that I'd like to make to the board this night. And do I have the floor to make that proposal?
Yep, so we have a couple of rules when addressing the board. We usually have a two-minute time limit and if you repeat yourself, then we've got what you've had to say, so we usually cut it off. But we're, we're pretty open, so if you have something that you wanna discuss, we're ready to hear you.
Alright, that's great. Alright, so my proposed phase of a community garden project is it is for permission from the board and for the exploration of the build of public space. Reason why: A tremendous amount of community support is served in the way in the previous weeks to come together as friends and students of North Brookfield to beautify the community and create a memorial garden space. We've chosen an individual that we can talk about as a figurehead for the memorialization, but I want to get to the nitty-gritty first. We would like to brainstorm available project usage. Our goal for the timeline is to schedule a community construction day for June 20th. That is 11 days from now. As far as the supplies go, we have received robust community support to donate plants, equipment, soil, and volunteer time. Like I said, resources, budgeting is not our concern. The two main points we're asking are for public space and permissioning of the wood. A couple of folks have mentioned upkeep, very wise idea. Our leadership expects to establish itself as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization before the time in which upkeep will become necessary. When established, we intend to allocate funds from our own nonprofits to pay for the annual upkeep of the garden. And I'd like to entertain the motion for the consideration of board selecting today. I yield my time. Thank you very much.
So you cut out a couple of times. Did you have a location in mind?
We were hoping to collaborate with the board to see what public spaces were most available at the time.
We'll have to think on this to see what they wanna do size-wise and logistics. We need, we need more, more input on what...
We were thinking of a plot of lands probably around the 10 by 14 foot space.
10 by 14. The only thing I think to dedicate public land for use, I think, requires town meeting vote, like the town meeting we were at the other night. So the Board of Selectmen can make a recommendation for public space? Identify the location and it needs approval of the town at town meeting. So you'll have to have a plan. I think we'll wanna know if you're, I mean, if you're just generally dedicating public space as a memorial space generally, I don't think it's as problematic as trying to dedicate it to a specific individual.
I think that what you're saying is very prudent. I think a lot of people have, it's a lot of different folks that like to be able to memorialize. And a general memorial space would make a lot of people pretty happy, I think.
Yeah, because in a general space like that, I'm thinking people can put a name on a rock and, you know, like some people are doing it on the rail trail. They're decorating a stone and leaving it somewhere on the trail, so... Yeah. Alright, I don't think your June 20th timetable is going to work because just because we need to figure out the space and then get a town meeting, which takes more than two weeks' time. So at this point, special town meetings require 14 days posting. And I think you, you were at the meeting the other night and I indicated that we do have two coming up. So there's two already scheduled and we could, if you have all your ducks in a row and everything's working...
You said that one of them is scheduled for July?
July will be one of them. Yeah, it is gonna be sewer, a sewer upgrade. I don't think it was explained, but the DEP has us under a consent to reduce the amount of phosphorus we're putting out. They can test for smaller amounts now, so so now we have to come into compliance and that's gonna be a huge upgrade. So we have to do a meeting in July, so between now and the...
Be able to suggest a motion to bring new business into that July meeting?
So the way that happens is the selectmen set the warrant. So you give us the information and we decide whether to put it forward to the, to the town. If we say no, then you can... If we say no, then you can circulate a petition and get enough signatures on a petition to force it on the warrant. So that's the procedure.
Okay.
Alright?
Very cool.
So.
Sounds good.
We'll, we'll try to identify a spot for you, and if we can't, we'll, we'll talk more. Okay?
Okay.
Sounds good.
That sounds great.
Alright.
Thank you so much, sir.
So, anything else we can do for you now?
That's all I've got.
Good? Alright. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
This is Eunice Jones. I was wondering whether you had heard anything from Camp Atwater about doing, opening the camp for the summer or whatever. I mean, I don't know what the communication is between the select board and, and the Urban League.
There's been no communication from the Urban League ever about, you know, when they open and what they do. I did talk to that director over an issue that you had asked me about a year or two ago, about a caretaker. But other than that, I haven't spoken with Camp Atwater at all, and I don't think they would actually come to the Board of Selectmen. I don't think they report to us because the camp stuff is a state-level thing. So I think they have to get their permissions at the state level.
So has the town waived the requirement that there be a year-round caretaker there on site?
I guess so. You know, based on longstanding practice, nobody's actually asked them to, to, uh, to identify their caretaker. We had, who was it, Dawn?
Dawn Smith.
Dawn Smith.
Lived across the street, and he was there all the time, but I don't think he's there.
No, he was their contact person whenever they needed somebody, so he was the one they identified as the on-site person. But I know he hasn't been doing it lately. I can contact them and ask them to identify somebody.
Okay, I just wanted to know the status of it.
Okay, yeah, that's something that really wasn't on our radar, so thanks for bringing it to our attention, and I'll make a phone call to the Urban League people and, and see what their plan is. I know the Board of Health would probably be overseeing the health aspect related to the pandemic requirements, but other than that, I honestly don't know. So, alright, I'll try to get you an answer.
Thank you.
Okay. Take care. Alright, and then we have announcements, Water Department flushing hydrants. Oh, we have fire report, too. John, you wanna just read that fire report for April, May?
The monthly fire report for April and May, applications, two new applications received and being reviewed. I guess that's to join the force. Is that what their application would be?
Yeah.
Fundraisers, all our fundraisers postponed with the state of affairs, equipment repairs. All trucks have had their oil changed. Car two had sensors replaced regarding emissions, new battery in car one. Fire prevention, continue working on pre-fire plans, continue to respond as needed for any after-action situations, updating their computers and fire prevention manuals, et cetera, with grant funding. Training has been modified regarding COVID protocols. Fire station maintenance, office roof replaced, this was ripped open during the windstorm. Insurance paid for the same. New water meter installed so we can fill trucks at the station and have it metered. Firefighters painted all the floors. Fire station building committee report. Committee has been holding Zoom meetings, working with O P M regarding many topics for the construction of the station. The committee understands the times we are faced with and continue discussing the same. Responses, they had several false alarms, five brush fires, two structure fires in town, two mutual aid responses to structure fires, one in Barry, one in Brookfield, two illegal burns, don't forget to get your burn permit, one electrical fire, two severe weather details, high winds and rain, multiple calls during the same, several lifts assist. Oh, that is. Would like to thank the town agencies for their assistance during all responses. Thank you, Chief Hallway.
Yeah. Lifts assist is when they have a patient and it's too much for two people to handle, they send out the fire department to help them.
To get them back up on their feet.
Yep. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the fire report for April and May.
Motion made.
I second, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you still hear me? Having a, the speaker keeps cutting out.
Don't make me come over there.
Still can't hear me, Tara? Oh, now you can? Okay.
Sorry, I was muted. Now I can hear you.
Alright.
Do you want me to read that fire report over again for you, Tara, or you all set?
That's okay, thank you.
Okay.
So the Water Department is still flushing hydrants June first through June nineteenth. And, oh, there's more on the back, alright. Anyone elected, oh, anybody elected on June first must be sworn in by the town clerk before you can assume your official duties, so if you have not yet seen the town clerk to be sworn in, please get to her before your first meeting. What else we got?
I think that's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
And the board has been working on an activity that will be taking place on the Fourth of July here in the Common. We just wanna put everybody on notice that we'll be ready to announce something by our next meeting. So if you don't have plans to go out of town, we're looking to celebrate the Fourth here on the Common. Alright. Any other business?
I don't think so. I think that covered it.
Alright. We good?
Yeah.
Alright, if we have no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, good night, everybody.